Good afternoon, we're going to open the afternoon session for the Clickatack County Commissioners for May fourteenth, twenty twenty four. And for those on Zoom who are having technical difficulties, we can hear each other. But the camera system is not working this afternoon, but we're going to go ahead with our meeting. So. To start off with, we're going to open with a public meeting for the shoreline substantial development permit and shoreline conditional use permit. S H twenty twenty three dash oh one Binge and Point Business Park applicant Clickatack County Port District number one. And we have Scott Edelman, thank you. And Commissioner Anderson is not Commissioner Anderson had a meeting and he's traveling right now, but Commissioner Christopher and. I am in the room, so Zoom knows who's here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The documents I just handed out are in your packet already, but I wanted you to have them just for reference because they're buried quite a ways in. I just showing the general location and the basic site plan. I'm pinching for Denise today, who's out out ill. So if you have questions that are beyond me and I was hoping Lori would be here, but she's out marking a site. So if you have questions beyond me, we can always take this up at a later date. So this is a consideration of shoreline substantial development permit. S H twenty twenty three oh one, the applicant is a Clickatack County Port District number one. Representatives are Dave Sauter and Margie Ziegler. I don't know if they're online. I didn't see them in the room.
I saw.
Oh, I see Margie, yeah. Okay, so they they're the applicants, the proposal, the Port District proposes to make improvements, site readiness type improvements on forty acres. The Binge and Point Business Park to support and facilitate light industrial development and recreational use. Included in the work, as you saw in your packet, a lot of roadwork, new asphalt, about six nine hundred linear feet of roadwork along with about over ten thousand linear feet of multi-use pathways. And substantial parking areas, also leveling of ground to get the site more development ready. And in particular, to maintain eighty nine foot elevation to keep it out of the five hundred year floodplain. Also some improvements to side access and circulation, relocation of existing pump houses, a lot of stormwater work. And then construction of about fifty one hundred feet of various utilities, water power sewer. It includes looping the water system, which is required for fire flow to support some of the development of larger buildings. As well, so all this work is readiness type works for for the port. There was a substantial development permit that is required per the Shorelines Management Act. Because it exceeds the legal threshold for what's considered substantial, which is just eighty five hundred dollars. There was a CIPA mitigation mitigated determination of non-significance issued January twenty fifth. There were several mitigations, use of vegetated slopes retaining walls to avoid wetland encroachment. There's a lot of plantings to deal with erosion of grasses, also a hundred and seven trees being proposed to put in the wetland buffer area. The use of permanent and temporary ditches, temporary for construction to prevent runoff. Planning Commission hearing was held in April fifteenth. There was no opposition. There was no public input at all, in fact, just so the applicants were represented. There was a recommendation of approval from the commission, eight to zero of everybody present with nineteen conditions. As far as I can tell, all are fairly standard, nothing that would be surprising to anybody, and they weren't opposed at all by the applicant. Options for you today, one to accept and approve the shoreline substantial development permit S H two oh two three oh one. Based on the planning commission recommendation or to schedule and hold your own public hearing if you feel that there's not substantial information. Or if you'd like to reconsider the decision or the recommendation or any of the conditions.
Are you ready? Do you have questions?
This, uh, she has public comment or anything today? Are we just going?
It's not, it's not a hearing.
Not a hearing, it's just a meeting.
Right, you can make this.
A question of the applicant, if the Port District is on. Hopefully, Mr. Sauter or somebody is there.
Yes, if can you hear me? This is Dave Sauter.
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
We can't see you, you can't see us.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully you can't see me either. I'm ugly. The permit, the boat ramp parking area, I just want to, I guess I'd say ask a question there. That we are either maintaining the current number of parking spaces or increasing the current number of parking spaces. We're not removing boat ramp parking. Is that correct?
That is correct. Our, the current plan does allow for actually expanded. Parking because we're we're aware that on busy days that the parking is can be inadequate for the recreational users.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, sir. That is the only question I had because that is the only public concerns I've been asked, so. With that, I have no issues with this project.
No, I don't either. I've worked through any questions I've had already, so I'm in favor of just.
Do you need a motion for approval, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Are you ready for a motion, ma'am?
Sir.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move that we approve shoreline substantial development permit and shoreline conditional use permit number S H two zero two three. Dash zero one for the business point Business Park. The applicant is a Clickatack County Port District number one.
And I'll step down in second. Any discussion?
Nope. And thank you, Mr. Sauter, for answering my question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much, Margie and David. Good to hear from you.
Yeah, kind of. Can't wait to see what this turns into being.
Yeah, all right. Well, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, that could be a lot of development down there. Good stuff.
Yeah, something positive, that's great. Okay. So we will now move to. Opening a public hearing. The purpose of the hearing is to consider the proposed ordinance to change the maximum speed limits. On McGowan Road, North Major Creek Road, Poplar Street and Vineyard Road. Public testimony was accepted on this matter on February Friday, the tenth of May. At five until five P M. The hearing is closed from taking any further public testimony. Did you receive any written testimony?
Only on Monday.
On Monday, okay, so it's included. Okay. Okay, so it came in late, that's true. So do you have any clarifications?
I do. Um, I wanted to hopefully clarify with staff to see if they reached out to the original applicant. They requested thirty miles an hour and see where they're. I mean, we obviously had a public that requested twenty five, they request thirty. Did you ever hear anything from that?
We haven't heard anything more back from them, but need to remind, and I should have made this clear in the beginning, that. This meeting isn't to determine what that speed limit is, it's just to accept an ordinance so we can enforce it legally.
Right.
So my recommendation is still standing at thirty and twenty five for those two.
Yep, no, I have no problem with that. I was just curious if we had got back any kind of clarification from the applicant themselves. With that, I have no other questions, comments. Or concerns with the recommendation from staff.
And for discussion, I'm. Ready to move forward. I'm happy with all the information we have. I trust staff's recommendation, so a motion.
So you need a motion, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I would make a motion that we accept the public works recommendation for recommended speed limits on the roads mentioned for this public hearing. To change the maximum speed limits on those roads as per the recommendation.
Motion in a second. I'll step down in seconds. So motion in a second. Any more discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all your work on that. You guys. So we have Tyrone in the room with us. If you'd like to come forward for a. Bit opening for public health. And it's in regards to the R F P for an electronic healthcare record system.
Good afternoon. Actually, I would like to make a slight correction actually for behavioral health.
Okay. Thank you for the behavior health R F P.
Yes.
Some question in the audience back there with. Mental health. Give it to him so he can get up and give them to me. So do you? You have bids in front of you that you would like us to open, or are you asking to take these back and open, or what is what is your recommendation, sir?
So I would like to ask, would it be possible if we can take it back and open it up?
Okay, and then you want to go back in review and make a recommendation. I'll leave it up to the chair to to make the determination whether it should be a public bid opening. Where the public has knowledge of the bidders and the bids. Or if it should go back to staff.
For the opening act one thirty, that's why we scheduled it one thirty, so yeah, they would need to get opened up.
In the public, yeah. So we have to wait fifteen minutes.
So we have to wait fifteen minutes before we do everything anyway. Ideally.
I guess what I meant to say was I would like for us to be able to work with our contractor. Who is doing the consulting with us to be able to evaluate after this process.
Okay, so.
Go ahead, yes.
Traditionally, what we do is we open the bids, we check the bids and average or advise the bid amounts and the companies and where they came from. And then we do not make a decision, sir. We hand it all back to the experts. Let you go back to your people and come back to us with a recommendation. That's ideally how we work. Hopefully that works for you.
Just have to do it formally.
No objections. I agree with the formality.
Okay. Good, so with that, then we have to wait thirteen more minutes to have our hearing because that's the formality.
Would you like to move forward for any miscellaneous reports or comments or unfinished business?
I just don't have anything today.
The only thing I have to report today is we did get a note back finally, and they apologized. Mr. Gaffney had been very busy and out of office. So we have some stuff pending now for our W S U contract.
Oh.
So probably next week we can get those.
Something?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been very curious what's going on there. It's been.
Yep.
Half a year with no contracts.
They were very helpful and and said it was kind of on their end.
It would be very nice to vote yes to fund the the four H program when there was.
Yeah.
Some political. I was trying to defund the four H program. So it would be nice to set that record.
And that was their goal too, to really solidify that and get that taken care of for us, so. And then they had some other offerings in the cost price with them, so. We'll work on that this week and hopefully bring it around next week.
Okay.
So that's one thing off the checklist.
Not off yet. It's on the list to be off.
Yeah, it's going over the edge.
Yeah, right, it's on the edge of the cliff where to get go off, that's what I have. Problem is right about the time it goes off, I'll start thinking about preparing for next year so we can have it done by January first.
Yeah.
So technically, it should be just a copy and paste with a change of dates maybe, but.
I don't think so.
Oh, from this year to next year?
Oh, I think I think it could be.
As I said, whatever we come up with this year will probably be a pretty much copy and paste to next year's.
Yeah.
We might be able to do it in time. Hopefully, we can get staff as well, including on this one, so they can. Hopefully, we can get with public defenders. To figure out any budgetary changes that might cause in the next year before we get into budget too, because it'd be nice to know what we have before we. Make decisions. Not like we can make a decision on that one, but it'd be nice to know what we're paying before we set the budget. Yeah. Right, so they're on a two-year contract, right? And it was, you know, they got whatever call that we were giving everybody else this year, and then they're good. That'll, you know, and then I I read that it was if. The recommendation from the Prosecutors Association or the bar or whatever is upheld through the courts. To remove their caseload or make it only two thirds of whatever that would go into effect two years from now, so it's not like that's going to hit us. Soon, if that does make it through the courts, we'll get a little bit of a heads up. Sure, we'll be screwed, but we'll get some hits upon it, and that, so that's a good thing. I thought that was going to come through this year and just leave us stranded. Find a third one anyway, but you know.
Yeah. Well, I have no other new updates for the week.
I don't either, other than that one. I did meet with. Southwest Washington Workforce Development added me some materials, so I'm going to look at those and do. Chat with them this week, but. So I know. Well, that killed three minutes, now we're going to just.
We're just so efficient.
See, Zoom's not on, we can do like charades or something, hand puppets. Permanently, what are we at now? Oh, and that could be a problem permanently.
I thought we had done that.
We did it for a month.
Oh, that's too bad. Yeah. Oh.
What is the the price difference?
Yeah, it's seventeen dollars for.
All right, for a month? And the only time we ever went over the hundred was for the town hall. Oh, the the jail public comment the first time. Well, and we're traditionally running around sixty-ish? A little man?
On the internet.
Oh, the internet man. Um. Yeah, I don't know. The hard part for me is, I mean, I guess as if it's an additional fifty bucks a month, that's still a three hundred percent increase. When ninety nine percent of the time you're not using. Unless you have some hot ticket thing, I think it would almost benefit us to just throw an idea out. Leave it the way it is, and if we know there's a hot button thing coming up, just add it for the month. Yeah, right?
How fast can you?
An hour?
Oh, well, that's good.
And then we're only paying for the month.
Right, no, I wouldn't up it, not for the times that we see.
I mean, I I would say if sure, if we know we're scheduling a town hall meeting in June. That might need more up it. Uh, but maybe leave that on us having personal responsibility to help you.
No.
Anytime there's something worn you so, and then if if there's a hundred and ten people and we didn't think through the day, then we just have to take the personal liability for that and say sorry. To that ten people that couldn't get on and just try to do better, and it saves the money in the longer.
Expensive.
So that that would be my recommendation.
Boy, they knew what they were doing. Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, not like fifty bucks a month is a bunch. Twenty four thousand taxpayers, we're, you know, talking like two cents a month, but it's still their money and not my money. So I don't want to spend it.
Well, if we're not using it, that's the problem.
Well, thank you for killing two Mormons.
So we'll make you on the hot seat for a while. How are things going? Any updates down in your world?
Uh, so right now, there are some updates. We are currently. I guess we're excited about starting S U D outpatient services primarily for adults.
S U D stand for?
Glad that you asked. So substance use.
Disorder.
Disorder. And may I take the time? Think through the clarifying question asked earlier when I mentioned the words behavioral health. And just introduce myself so that those who are present can know. My name is Tyrone Bryan. I I serve Clickatack County Behavioral Health. Our director is Erin Quinn, and she is the public health director, and I. I operate in the capacity as a behavioral health manager.
Nice to meet you all. Can you? Give us all the aspects of behavioral, because I said mental health, but it's. It's kind of all things related, really.
Right.
Like substance abuse disorder and everything else that some people may not think. Is a mental health, even though it is kind of a mental health.
So when you see individuals who may be using. Whatever substances and they might have a mental health disorder, it's very difficult at times to say which of the two should you address first. And in order to do that, you have to do an assessment. So whatever work you do in mental health, you have to do an assessment, and that is a requirement per the W A C as well as the R C Ws. And and it has to be a particular individual who has the credential in order to conduct said interview. And so when you obtain the information, you essentially have an idea of how to proceed and to be able to have a conversation with the person. To develop the level of care as a next step. Now, some people, let's say they predominantly use substance use, and it's creating dysfunction in multiple areas of their lives, right? That individual may need a higher level of care, so whenever you hear the words higher level of care, we have to always think about hospitalization. Now, sometimes an individual might. Present or conduct themselves in a way with mental health disorders that may look like something is definitely going on. But a lot of times when you talk to the individual, even though the behavior might seem. Uh, just different or weird or whatever we want to describe it. When we talk to said individual, we might even discover that a person has a justification as to why they do the things they do, so it may not warrant hospitalization. So for example, if we hear that a person is running down in the middle of the street and their shirt is missing, right? So suppose somebody sees that, it might think, oh, that's not common or typical to see in this town, so let's call the cops. Let's say we get involved, we might go to the person and say, oh, I was actually hot, that's why I took off my shirt. You know, or I had a or their mental health symptoms make them believe that they're being attacked by a WASP or something like that. So when taking off their shirt, you know, they thought they got rid of it, so they were trying to problem solve. So instead of saying, oh, we think you need to go to a hospital, we try to work with our person and try to connect with their supports and try to provide help and assistance instead of. A higher level of care.
There was one thing that I. Kind of became concerned about with the, which I'm sure you've heard, the the attack on. Deputy near with the mental health person and the hammer and. When you guys go out and do a. D C R designated crisis responder check on somebody to see if they're. Not great, you're doing those currently, you're doing those at Skyline, K B H and the jail. Is there? Is there law enforcement or anybody there to make sure your D C Rs are protected from taking a hammer to the head? I mean, I I mean, you have a safety protocol set up for your people to make sure that somebody doesn't just go mental on them and.
That's a very good question.
And a question.
We actually just recently completed our violence prevention training, which is required per the W A C and also R C Ws. And I'm actually licensed in order to conduct it, so it's an ongoing training as well as professional development that we provide. And it'd be nice to be able to do it. Across the board, but because of the licensing process, it wouldn't be possible. But essentially, it's helpful to learn about de-escalating a situation as well as evading potential riskful risky behaviors. Now, in terms of safety concern, we currently do not have the mobile crisis response. Team which would comprise of a care provider, a bachelor's level trained person. And a peer in most situations to go out and respond into the community outside of those places you mentioned, the schools, the hospitals, the jail. But in the meantime, if we were to respond out into the community outside of those places that we identified. We would definitely have to work in tandem with law enforcement to ensure that the area is safe and that the person wouldn't pose a risk to us. Now, if the individual, if you see the individual at the hospital, in most cases, depending on what transpired, they would be in a four-point restraint. So that way, there is um, air towards protecting whoever is present.
I figured you guys were. Making sure you were safe. I just with that, when that incident happened, it got me thinking about you guys, so. Good to know.
Yeah.
Well, there, that killed eight minutes. What more do you need? Two more?
Just to tell you, we appreciate you and your staff. And what you're doing, you know.
Yeah, it's. I I'm so impressed on how far we've come in some shorter period of time, and I'm not going to, you know, sit here and dip this comprehensive mental health, but. You know, when when. I started and Commissioner Anderson started, comprehensive was comprehensive. Uh, we knew well about it because the commissioners before us knew well about it. Uh, the issues were always there and it just never stopped, so it's when they decided that they're checking out of the county. Part of me was scared, but part of me was like, wonderful, because. We can do better, and you guys have showed that we can do better. So I'm I'm very proud of what we've accomplished in two years. And in the trajectory that we're on, I think is going to really. If we keep moving in that direction, which I think we are. I think it'd be really good, so I'm glad. That was one of my big. My big issues three years ago. And, yeah. I'm just happy about it. Let's just put it that way.
Thank you for being patient. It is one thirty and we back to our bid opening. For behavioral health for an R F P for electronic healthcare record system.
So in front of me, there are three packages and the first one. It's. Here. So. I'm gonna.
So you can either, what we'll end up doing is having you bring them up to me either one at a time or all three at the same time. And then if you can give us a brief update on. Why we went out for this bid, and then I will just open them and we'll look at them and we'll return them to you, sir. So you can either bring me one or all three, your choice.
I'm going to bring all three, and thanks for stealing my Christmas moment.
Yeah, and you were really hanging off of that.
Keep us on the correct legal path. Scissors are to the left.
Yep.
Yeah, I bet you're kind of excited about these bids.
This one is. Do you have a preference of opening or no? Don't care.
Actually, I don't have a preference. But whenever. Whenever I am ready, I can go over just a quick overview of.
Yep, if you would go over just a quick overview of why we're doing this or what it's for, and then that's all we need.
So we set out to acquire an electronic behavioral health record. In order for us to document the work we do. Per the law, we have to have said process in place. In order for us to seek reimbursement, especially when we are working with different managed care organizations like Wellpoint. Coordinated Care, C H B W and Molina. And so with staff doing the work that they do. It's one thing when somebody says, hey, I did this work, and it's another thing to say, okay, show me evidence. And so in our work, it is absolutely critical that we document the work we do. And if we're doing any assessments, any follow-ups, any aftercare, any discharges, any collaboration, we have to document all of those things. And it involves all individuals on the team. And it's it's just one way of also ensuring that we can sustain our program. Because one of the key things about an E B H R is to be able to collect reports and and data and information. In order for us to justify the work we're doing and to say, if we need additional funding, here's what our work looks like. So too often, you might find individuals say, why don't we do this? Why don't we do that? But then we don't have the numbers to justify the staffing pattern as well as the care that's needed. So essentially, that's just a quick overview of 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 the work and why it's important. There were six that we initially selected. I'm just going to quickly run through them so people have an idea. The first is NetSmart, the second is Qualifax, the third was Therapy Brands, the fourth was E H R Your Way. Uh, the fifth was Valant and. The other was Core Solutions. I went on a trip and I also saw demonstrations. And I informed them if they would like to participate in the process, and they were able to submit an R F P proposals as well. And that additional group was the Cantana, so they were added at the last minute. And so out of the seven, we have three which are in front of you, and that's NetSmart, Qualifax. And also Cantata.
Okay, perfect. Well, I'm opening that fax right now. Or sorry, Netmark. With my own scissors. Oh, wow, they got pretty binded. Ew. They don't have the whole punches in. Generalized. Budget amount on here. Oh, it's open, that's why it's all falling all over my lap. We can get to close the freezing whole bunch. We can get to close the freezing whole bunch.
Index on the second page.
We're just hoping they had a a a number. It's not like we need bid bond or anything like that, but I was just hoping. I don't know if I technically see one in here, or if that's gonna be part of the negotiating. Were they advised to come back with a uh bid price? Or are you just seeing the qualifications that they have, so you can enter a negotiation with one of them to come up with a price?
Alright, so that's a very good question. So initially, we started out with a procurement plan. And we basically, we are now at the stage where we are about to do the demo- the demonstration. So essentially, your question is asking. Uh, for a price, essentially that we don't know yet, because we have to go next towards a demo, then an evaluation, and then.
So this is more of a request for qualification?
Yes.
And I see.
Request for bid.
It does, uh, they do contain their certificate of insurance that's in here.
Yeah, but there's not. So there wouldn't be a bid bond and there wouldn't be a price quote, because all they're telling you is. Essentially, how qualified they are.
Yes.
And then you're gonna work with them individually, got it, makes sense.
Yep.
Then it's not really a.
May I provide?
Opening, but. It worked.
May I provide a a timeline? Because we may have to have a follow-up meeting, not may, we probably, we're likely to have a follow-up meeting. So essentially, as of um the fifteenth, we would like to be able to do dem- uh demonstrations with them. As well as move forward uh with evaluation, and then by the end of the month of May, on the thirty-first. Uh, we can begin the negotiation and vendor selection piece.
Okay. Yeah, that's quick too. That won't be long.
Yeah, we're kind of pressed for time due to the the opening on July first.
Yep. So this is Qualifax Systems LLC.
May I add that Qualifax, their recommendation is to use a. A subgroup within their framework called NSYNC. So they're not using their larger platforms, because E H R, E B H Rs, el- the, as we mentioned. They gather information, but if you're if you're a smaller entity like we are. You're you're gonna, you know, work with us to ensure that we can grow eventually, so NSYNC is is a smaller platform.
So in clarification, you're gonna look at these. Kind of make a recommendation, meet with them. Work, hammer out the details of what you're both looking for, and then you're gonna find it out a number. And then we'll go from there once you get the the dollar amount, right?
So essentially, we're going to look at our criteria and then score them accordingly.
Right. And that completely destroy your boxes.
So I did not see their insurance. And I suppose that was a requirement of the contract, so you'll have to.
So. One of the things that our consultant X P O is open to do is to learn about the outcome of today's meeting.
That goes in there, and then the whole thing goes in there.
And then, and then they will reach out to each. And then lay out the expectations for the demonstration, so in during the demonstrations, they would have to come prepared with all the things that's required.
Right. Yep, no, that makes sense, okay, good enough. Good, and then you don't need to fill.
Yep.
Alright. Uh. With that, Madam Chair, I would recommend that we remit these back to Behavioral Health. Uh, for review, evaluation, and eventually a recommendation.
And I agree.
Uh, that was my motion, you're agreeing is second.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear the word motion, um, sure, I'll second the motion.
Okay.
And uh.
I have no discussion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Uh, I.
I, motion passes. So you can.
Thank you, sir.
Go go through your presence now that we opened for you.
I know, right, I stole his Christmas, that make me feel bad. Yeah, go ahead, come take these, what's that? Uh, can you clarify?
Ned Smart, Qualifax, NSYNC. And Cantata.
Yeah, you might have to spell that one, I was thinking of that one, yeah.
Oh, those are ours.
So that's you, that's you, that's you.
Smart, me decide to walk over.
That's good, it's good for you.
Well, then I probably should open the top of the box so you didn't lose it all out the side on your way back.
I will sort it out.
I tried to put it all back where I got it, so hopefully I didn't make too much of a mess. Oh, other than I stole your scissors.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, there you go.
I don't think we have anything else, we've went through our miscellaneous reports and unfinished business.
I do not have anything that I can think of. Um, other than giving you an update on the Golden Dale cleanup.
Okay, sure.
Um, definitely had less people. This year, last year we had thirty-five, this year we had about fifteen. Um, I think part of that was due to my vacation and sickness. So I was kind of out of the loop of publicizing as much as we normally do. I think part of it had to do, WAGAP was running the cleanup. Um, in a Cody Park, and they made a little Facebook post and. They had about nine people, I think, half adults, half kids, and one bag of trash. Um, and that might have did something, but I also didn't realize that we had scheduled it, we scheduled it on the day of the uh Walk for Life. So, God, there had to be two hundred or three hundred people out here at the exact same time doing that one. And I went, ew, so uh with all those things, we we did have less of a turnout, I think we. We collected a lot of stuff, but it was also Mother's Day weekend, so even the transfer station wasn't as busy.
That's a bad.
Um, so yeah, I think I think it went well, was good. Uh, picked a bad weekend, lesson learned. Uh, wanna publicly thank Republic for donating all of that and the transfer station fees. And buying everybody pizza and and all of that, they're a very good partner, and I wanna publicly thank them for that. Uh, and the citizens of Golden Dale, thank them for that. Other than that, that's all I have on that issue.
I'm good, I have nothing.
Dallasport's this weekend, isn't it? Dallasport cleanup this weekend, W J? Dallasport cleanup this weekend.
Get it on the record.
I was gonna say, I didn't advertise enough for Golden Dale, so now I'm advertising for Dallasport.
And what time does it start?
Yeah, it's like community center slash D N R facility.
Yeah, because we are sharing their park.
Right. Yeah, okay. So, yeah, all you Dallasport people head down there.
So the bins will be at the D N R property?
I believe that's the.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mentioned that already. Alright, good enough.
Okay, I'm good, motion?
Um, anything else staff needs us to do before next week? No workshops this week. Uh, workshop this week, workshop next week has been canceled, is that correct? So our next workshop is the thirtieth, is that correct? Okay, and then I'm hearing you have Dallasport Community Cleanup Information back there in the back room, I'll have to relay it on here, so go slow. May seventeenth. Saturday, May eighteenth. Nine to four, both days. Sponsored by Dallasport Murdoch Community Council. In partnership with Republic Services. See them on Facebook at Dallasport Neighbors. Good enough, that's the Dallasport Community Cleanup this weekend. Uh, if you're down there in Dallasport, or you actually wanna go down, go down and do it, if I make some free time, I'm gonna go down and do it, because I do those things. And that's all I have, with that, uh, Madam Chair, I, we have something else. Wow. Good call. So no workshop this week, we will be no, I am noting that we. Uh, next week, we'll be attending a meeting with the East Community County Board of Commissioners on Tuesday, the twenty-first. In the afternoon. Um, or do they have Zoom there? Okay, so we will be here in the morning. Uh, and then we'll be adjourning our Zoom, and we will have their Zoom on the agenda for the twenty-first. Um. And then post it on the website. So you can tune in to us on their Zoom in the afternoon. Um, yeah, with that, I would make a motion to adjourn until next week.
And I'll step down in second. No discussion, all those in favor?
I.
I, motion passes, thank you.